The stream, hang on just a second. It's open. We're good. Go ahead.
Okay. My move that the Alamo County Public School Board go into a closed meeting is authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2-23711A Code of Virginia and the subsection 1 for the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment and the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body.
Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second. Ms. Johnston?
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
The motion passes. We'll see you in the other, in the other meeting.
Oh.
So, Crea or Nathan? I need access to activate the breakout rooms. Kate, you're in the wrong meeting. You need to go to the other one.
So we just have two others who are coming in. Dr. Acuff is with us.
I am, clearly.
And there she is. Okay. Okay, Mr. Page.
I move that the board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Johnston?
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne? Mr. Page?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Abstain. Wasn't able to be in the meeting.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes. The motion passes and it is currently 6:18. Let's adjourn until 6:30. And we'll come back on this page.
Feel better, Judy.
Thank you very much. I'll be back soon.
Okay.
Hey, Dr. Acuff, are you okay?
I'm okay, yeah. Just having technical difficulties and the nurse hasn't called back about my mother.
Okay.
Um, Jono, um, I was going to introduce my appointee for the school advisory health board. Yeah, the school health advisory board.
Okay.
Can I not be here in
Yes.
an open, in regular session?
Yes, we'll do that under announcements. Mr. Page, Mr. Page has a nomination as well.
Thank you.
So we'll be back in about 10 minutes?
Yes.
Hey, Crea or Nathan, I think I need to be host in order to access the breakout rooms.
Who are you talking to, Jennifer?
Our technology folks.
Okay, all right.
Yes, Jennifer, I'm pretty sure you do need to be the host to access those or co-host.
I got it.
Oh.
Hey, Jono, did you see the Rosam?
What's that? What, Dave?
I just put a note in the chat. Jono Lindsay is going to do the intro for the Croze addition, so you can hand it directly to her.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Hey, Jono, your microphone's not working.
Okay, how about now? Is this now?
I could hear it then.
Yeah, I can hear it.
How about now?
It's me.
Okay. I can't believe that.
But now I have an idea for a future prank. We can just
You can do that on purpose.
That could be an awful lot of fun. Can't hear you, can't hear you, really can't hear you. Okay, it is 6:30 and so I'm called the Alamo County School Board for a regular work session on May 28th. I call this meeting to order. May we take a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Just a few items before we get
There's no one signed up for public comment.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Next up is announcements. Dr. Haas, do you have any announcements?
I think I have one from Dr. Hairston, if you saw my email earlier today. But I also just want to really commend all of our high school principals and their staff for the outstanding job that they're doing with the graduation ceremonies. You know, I'm never surprised, but I'm always amazed at the, um, the level of care that they put into their work to make sure that it's going to be high quality to really respect our graduating seniors who've all been with us and had such a commitment to our school program. So I'm really proud of them. I know Jono and I have either been there together to make our, our speeches for the ceremonies or he's coming as I'm going or, um, you know, I'm arriving and he, as he's leaving. But it's just been so well orchestrated and I'm really proud of their work. Do you have a quick announcement? Thank you, sir.
I am only speculating that you would like for me to announce the successful event that we had this past Saturday. I did, I did not read your email, but I would like to, okay, great. I would like to announce that this past Saturday, our students with our anti-racism policy pulled off a spectacular teen, teen town hall conference that was so impressive. We had three, uh, outstanding panelists that talked specifically to COVID-19 impact on health issues specific to our minority communities, primarily our African-American families and Hispanic families, and connected that to our anti-racism policy. Our students were able to define the three different forms of anti-racism, used examples. And we had, to my knowledge, close to 80 folks on the Zoom itself. And I'm not sure how many we had on the live stream. But from the reports that I received, they were all extremely, extremely positive.
Dr. Hairston, there's another meeting coming up this weekend, isn't there?
Not to my knowledge.
Is it next week? Is it next week?
Not one that I'm sponsoring.
Okay, I thought, I thought there was one. Okay, fair enough. Dr. Haas, any other announcements? Okay, I'd just like to echo something that Dr. Haas said because the, the the smoothness with which the graduation, the virtual graduations have taken place is, is really impressive. And last Friday, I was down at Monticello with, with Dr. Haas. And there were four or five cars that were lined up down on their football field or on the road around it. And families would get out, they went up, they stood about six or eight feet away from Mr. Brahovak, who said some nice words to them. They then went and took pictures with the whole family and then just the mom and dad and graduate. And against a backdrop of the football stadium scoreboard. And the scoreboard for the scores read 2020. And everything else on the board was basically all 20s. And so everybody got their chance. And in two different situations, the dad types walking off, I don't know if they were uncles or dads, but they, they both walked off talking to their families and said, "This was so much better than I ever thought this would be. Wow." So just, you know, people really liked it. And, uh, so there's a lot, a lot to be proud of. Okay, for other announcements, we have a couple of nominations to advisory committees. Mr. Page, would you like to go first?
Yes, Mr. Alcarro. I will reappoint Kate Backish to the Long Range Planning Committee from Samuel Miller District. And in addition to that, I'd also like to echo what Dr. Hairston was saying about the presentation on Saturday. The four student leaders all from Alma, the three panel members, and also Ms. Waterwicks as organizer all did excellent jobs at that program. So it was really outstanding.
Mr. Page, would you make your nomination in the form of a motion, please?
Yes, I move that Kate Backish be appointed to the Samuel Miller District's seat for the Long Range Planning Committee.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Johnston?
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Ellen, are you?
Yes.
There we go.
And Mr. Alcarro?
Yes. The motion passes. Congratulations. Dr. Acuff?
Yes, let's see, am I unmute? I'm, you can hear me. I have a nominee, an appointee for the School Health Advisory Board. Shay Carter, who has a student in Woodbrook, who is with the UVA Center for Politics. She applied in December, well before COVID, but she remains interested in, in being on the Health Committee. And I think she would be a good asset. I move that we approve her, her appointment to School Health Advisory Board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Johnston?
Um, Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Okay, both nominees passed. Congratulations to all. Uh, next up is school board and superintendent business. Dr. Haas?
Uh, we do not have additional business. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do any school board members have business at this time? Okay, next up is our school division work session. And is Lindsey here with us? Lindsey, there you are. I see your name. So I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Snotty for the Crozay Elementary additions and renovations.
Hi, good evening. I'm Lindsey Snotty, Deputy Director at Building Services. And as a result of the tremendous population growth in and around Crozay, two elementary schools, Brownsville and Crozay, are running out of space. During the 1920 school year, six mobile classrooms were added for a total of eight to Brownsville as a temporary solution. Brownsville is nearing 900 students and Crozay now has 360 students. Several prospective housing developments will add even more students to these two schools. The solution recommended by our Long Range Planning Advisory Committee and supported by both school and county planning officials is to expand the size of Crozay Elementary to a capacity of 680 students. This will not only safely accommodate future Crozay students, but allow room to move some Brownsville students to the expanded Crozay Elementary, thereby improving the learning environment for students at both schools well into the future. The total budget for the Crozay project is 20.4 million. The design funding for this project is included in the FY 1920 CIP budget. The decision for funding construction was postponed until later this year. VMDO Architects was contracted for the project and design work began in March 2020. Since then, the Design Committee and VMDO has met every two weeks to develop the schematic design and they have creatively and effectively engaged with the community through Zoom interviews, informational videos, and also student design activities. Ken Thacker with VMDO is with us this evening to review the project details and to present the schematic design for information this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Lindsey. Greetings from St. George Avenue in Crozay. Uh, I will share my screen and pull up our PowerPoint. Is everybody able to see that?
I'm not.
You're not? Okay.
Ken, are you hitting share screen at the bottom?
Yep. How about now?
There we go.
All right, well, thanks again, Lindsey. Uh, as Lindsey said, I'm Ken Thacker with VMDO Architects and I'm pleased to be here to give you this update on schematic design progress for Crozay Elementary School. This is the first of several updates that we are scheduled to give you over the course of the year as we seek input, converse with the community, and develop ideas for transforming Crozay Elementary School. At this time, we're only about one quarter of the way through our design process with many more iterations to evaluate and design decisions to make. For over 10 weeks now, we've been meeting with a diverse advisory group of project stakeholders, educators, administrators, and facility specialists. As Lindsey said, this is what we call our Design Committee. Together, we've honed this project's program and evaluated concepts. As the design process continues, we'll establish priorities and steer the work towards a successful outcome, on time and on budget. For those of you who don't know us, VMDO is a local 75-person architectural firm. We're specialists in high-performance school design. We work around the state and even across the globe. But it's always really exciting to be working in our own backyard with friends and neighbors. We have a 40-year relationship with Albemarle County Public Schools and we have designed or made improvements to just about every school in the county. We're especially pleased to be working on Crozay Elementary because our firm designed the original school in the late 1980s and we designed a sixth classroom addition there in 1995. At a time when most every new school looked the same, Crozay Elementary established a precedent for unique school design specifically suited to its place. The building was originally conceived as simple, well-ordered forms clustered around an iconic circular library. Over the years, the intimate school building has been lauded for its reinforcement of community values. We also know the Crozay community well. My teammate Kelly Callahan, also a partner at VMDO, and I are both residents of the area and have sent our children through the Western feeder patterned schools. We understand that Crozay is a proudly independent village that values the health of its community and its schools. Crozay Elementary, a green ribbon school, shares a vision with the community for a happy, healthy, high-performing school environment. As Lindsey mentioned, these are comments that we have heard repeatedly during a robust
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. L. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Okay, both nominees passed. Congratulations to all. Next up is School Board and Superintendent Business. Dr. Haas?
We do not have additional business. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any school board members have business at this time? Okay, next up is our School Division Work Session. And is Lindsey here with us? Lindsey, there you are. I see your name. So I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Snotty for the Croze Elementary additions and renovations.
Hi, good evening. I'm Lindsey Snotty, Deputy Director at Building Services. And as a result of the tremendous population growth in and around Croze, two elementary schools, Brownsville and Croze, are running out of space. During the 1920 school year, six mobile classrooms were added for a total of eight to Brownsville as a temporary solution. Brownsville is nearing 900 students and Croze now has 360 students. Several prospective housing developments will add even more students to these two schools. The solution recommended by our Long Range Planning Advisory Committee and supported by both school and county planning officials is to expand the size of Croze Elementary to a capacity of 680 students. This will not only safely accommodate future Croze students, but allow room to move some Brownsville students to the expanded Croze Elementary, thereby improving the learning environment for students at both schools well into the future. The total budget for the Croze project is 20.4 million. The design funding for this project is included in the FY 1920 CIP budget. The decision for funding construction was postponed until later this year. BMDO Architects was contracted for the project and design work began in March 2020. Since then, the Design Committee and BMDO has met every two weeks to develop the schematic design, and they have creatively and effectively engaged with the community through Zoom interviews, informational videos, and also student design activities. Ken Thacker with BMDO is with us this evening to review the project details and to present the schematic design for information this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Lindsey. Greetings from St. George Avenue in Croze. I will share my screen and pull up our PowerPoint. Is everybody able to see that?
I'm not.
You're not? Okay.
Ken, are you hitting share screen at the bottom?
Yep. How about now?
There we go.
All right, well, thanks again, Lindsey. As Lindsey said, I'm Ken Thacker with BMDO Architects, and I'm pleased to be here to give you this update on schematic design progress for Croze Elementary School. This is the first of several updates that we are scheduled to give you over the course of the year as we seek input, converse with the community, and develop ideas for transforming Croze Elementary School. At this time, we're only about one quarter of the way through our design process, with many more iterations to evaluate and design decisions to make. For over 10 weeks now, we've been meeting with a diverse advisory group of project stakeholders, educators, administrators, and facility specialists. As Lindsey said, this is what we call our Design Committee. Together, we've honed this project's program and evaluated concepts. As the design process continues, we'll establish priorities and steer the work towards a successful outcome, on time and on budget. For those of you who don't know us, BMDO is a local 75-person architectural firm. We're specialists in high-performance school design. We work around the state and even across the globe. But it's always really exciting to be working in our own backyard with friends and neighbors. We have a 40-year relationship with Albemarle County Public Schools, and we have designed or made improvements to just about every school in the county. We're especially pleased to be working on Croze Elementary because our firm designed the original school in the late 1980s, and we designed a sixth classroom addition there in 1995. At a time when most every new school looked the same, Croze Elementary established a precedent for unique school design specifically suited to its place. The building was originally conceived as simple, well-ordered forms clustered around an iconic circular library. Over the years, the intimate school building has been lauded for its reinforcement of community values. We also know the Croze community well. My teammate Kelly Callahan, also a partner at BMDO, and I are both residents of the area and have sent our children through the Western feeder pattern schools. We understand that Croze is a proudly independent village that values the health of its community and its schools. Croze Elementary, a green ribbon school, shares a vision with the community for a happy, healthy, high-performing school environment. As Lindsey mentioned, these are comments that we have heard repeatedly during a robust community engagement period that has included digital surveys, one-on-one interviews with an architect, small group chats, and informational videos that we've prepared to share feedback and illustrate ideas we're considering. If you haven't had a chance to look at them, I really encourage you to do so. I'm incredibly proud of our ability to conduct community engagement through purely digital means. Like the community that it serves, Croze Elementary is a beautiful place with many unique qualities. The campus has pastoral views to the east and mountain views to the west, an idyllic small farm to the north, and a wooded creek to the south. The site includes a lot of topography, which the building uses to its advantage, but it makes the campus less expansive than it may appear. In general, there is one main entrance to the campus off of Croze Avenue with a bus loop and parking lot at the front of the school. A number of conflicting pedestrian paths and vehicle travel ways are an immediate concern of ours. The campus boasts a number of beloved and well-used amenities: play areas, a rain garden, a full-size soccer and football field, quick-start tennis courts, a Little League baseball diamond, and even a moan walking path are all behind the school. Resolving vehicular circulation is an important first step in school site design. We propose a new service drive and bus loop entirely separated from automobile traffic. Buses following the yellow path in this diagram would drop off and load students at the current car rider entrance at the back of the school, at the red triangle. Service vehicles would use this new drive as well. They would follow the blue path on this diagram. The bus loop would be also available for overflow parking for special events and weekend field use. Children who are driven to school by car would be dropped off at the front door to the school. An expanded parking lot here offers additional queuing space essential for keeping Croze Avenue clear of stop traffic. Croze Elementary also has a healthy walk-to-school population. These students would follow a new sidewalk, shown here in purple, that would ring the parking lot and eliminate existing conflicts between walkers and cars. We propose to increase the school's parking capacity and improve the front entry sequence. We also want to enhance and extend existing softscape and paved play areas, create outdoor learning opportunities, and better utilize the entirety of the campus. In order to accommodate the enlarged enrollment of 680 students at this school, we will not only need to add classrooms, but will also need to enlarge core facilities, such as the administrative suite, the media center, the kitchen, the cafeteria, and physical fitness spaces. We initially explored expansion options at both the front and the back of the school, but acknowledged that ripple effects would complicate construction as well as ongoing school operations. Additions here, shown at locations one and two, would also block some of the most precious views from the school. Accordingly, we are recommending a significant multi-story addition to the south of the school on land that is not well utilized because of its steep slopes. A backside view of the 1995 classroom addition shows the extent of grade change across the site from north to south. Here is an initial concept sketch taken from the southeast, showing the integration of the new learning wing with the rest of the existing school. And here is an updated image of the same view. Existing school at right, new learning wing at the left. While one might think that a three-story addition would overwhelm the scale of the original building, the addition is actually no taller than the existing school because of the way that it is built into the hillside. Here is an initial sketch, followed by a more detailed view. The team is particularly excited about the opportunity to occupy the space between the new learning wing addition and the new movement addition with meaningful outdoor space. So I'm talking about the area that's highlighted in the blue dots. These views of this new landscaped courtyard suggest an outdoor room that is conducive to learning and gathering, and attempts to make visible the course of water across the site, from parking lot to creek, through interactive rain gardens. The learning wing addition bridges across to the existing school on levels one and two, opening a passage below to access recreational space outside of the school's lowest level. This view highlights the connection between the courtyard and the lowest level and suggests the extent of covered outdoor space there. The learning wing's location strategically places new classrooms immediately adjacent to nature, both through upper-floor views and with direct access to the outdoors from the lowest floor of classrooms, which we were able to accomplish at Brownsville Elementary Edition many years ago. This project also includes a discreet addition for the kitchen and cafeteria, highlighted here in blue on the north side of the school. These views show how the existing cafeteria can open into a new dining space by removing doors and windows at the existing exterior wall. First, a view from inside the existing cafeteria. And here, a view from within the new addition, looking back into the existing cafeteria and the performance platform. And then here is a view from within the new addition, I'm sorry, within the adjacent to the gymnasium space. This is what we're calling our movement addition, opening into the existing gymnasium. Together, these spaces can accommodate an all-school gathering. At the front of the school, a more expansive entry plaza is proposed, along with interior changes to improve visibility to the parking area, which is an important factor for safety. We would also like to relocate the flagpole so that children are not crossing a travel lane to raise and lower the flag each day. These floor plans, illustrating both existing and new spaces, highlight the new organization of the expanded school. At the upper level, what we are calling Level Two, the existing front door is bracketed by a renovated administration area on one side and a counseling and student wellness center on the other. The expanded kitchen and cafeteria are here at the northern end of the school, and the library is shown expanding into several adjacent spaces and making itself more visible from the adjacent corridor. Second-grade classrooms will occupy the upper level of the existing classroom wing with added toilets at the center of this grouping. That's at the top of the page. In the new addition, to the right, third-grade classrooms occupy this floor, along with a special education room, which is at the same level as the cafeteria, library, and administration suite. Existing music and art rooms, which are, appear in purple, at one time on the building's periphery, are now centrally located. At the existing lower level of the school, what we are calling Level One, we see kindergarten and first-grade classrooms, each of which will have an in-room toilet. Other tactical improvements that will be made here include replacement of damaged sink bases and the removal of existing cloakroom walls, which will make the classrooms feel more spacious. In addition, we see the fourth-grade classrooms in the addition at right. We have also placed an assistant principal's office here with a distributed administrative presence in the middle of this three-story learning wing. The new movement room opens onto a new protected courtyard space for outdoor learning that doubles as a second entrance for walkers and car riders. That's represented by this red triangle here. So at the lowest level of the new learning wing addition, what we are calling Level Zero, mechanical and electrical rooms, as well as toilets and other support spaces, are placed against the retaining wall. On the opposite side of the corridor, we see the fifth-grade classrooms, which open directly to the outdoors for unique new learning opportunities between the school and the creek. Now, we are presently working on developing a detailed construction phasing plan. This is focused on maintaining safe school operations. The plan is a work in progress, and we are continuing to review its logistical details and cost impacts with our Design Committee. Rather than delve into the many details of the plan, I want you to know that student safety and preserving a positive learning environment during a long period of construction are critically important to us. The schedule highlights the roughly 18-month period of construction, where, as you can see by this calendar, where the summer months are shaded in gray, we're trying to concentrate as much of the work in the summertime as we possibly can. Obviously, we want to avoid disruption during the 21-22 school year as much as possible. So during Phase One, we want the contractor to concentrate on building the new bus loop so that it may be used for additional construction parking. One option we are considering is the installation of a temporary multi-classroom modular unit that will provide much-needed swing space for classroom renovations during the following school year. Temporary modular units like this are currently at Scottsville Elementary and Brownsville Elementary and can greatly alleviate the disruption that nearby renovation can cause. Phase Two involves the largest additions. It essentially extends through the full duration of the construction period. Phase Three is also an addition, but is differentiated from Phase Two because of greater time constraints at this work site. Phase Four involves multiple sub-phases of rapid renovations within each teaching space and elsewhere in the school. Again, we're currently looking at ways to concentrate classroom renovation work during summers to minimize disruption. Phase Five captures all of the remaining work that is necessary to open the expanded school in the fall of 2022. This comprehensive view illustrates the location and relative size of each of the additions at the school. Again, we want you to see the level of thinking that is going into this part of project planning, to hear that student safety is at the top of our priority list, and to understand that we will work to develop more precise logistical plans in concert with our Design Committee. This topic will surely be revisited when we come back to report at the second of our three phases of design work. So, next steps for us include submitting our schematic design drawings to a cost estimator, as well as conducting a value engineering study with an independent consultant over the next month. This study will be performed whether the cost estimate tells us we are at the low or above our $15.6 million construction budget. One silver lining of the COVID-related shutdown and its economic impacts may be that construction prices will fall in the near term. We're already seeing some evidence of this. As you know, we have seen prices rise steadily over the past few years, and we know that the construction market can be fickle, with construction cost escalation outpacing the rate of inflation. But the reverse is also true, and future construction costs may be trending downward. In past recessions, we have witnessed savvy clients taking advantage of these downturns and advancing their capital projects. Subject to your approval, we will continue to develop this design through the end of the calendar year with an expectation to bid the work in January of 2021. Again, this date is important for a construction sequence that would minimally impact students and school operations during the '21 and '22 academic year. Are there questions on my answer?
I gotta tell you, Ken, I think it's awesome. I love the fact that you're preserving the view from the back. I'm very glad that you're expanding the cafeteria and the gym space because that would have been tight with 600 kids. The only question I have for you is, because the cafeteria is on the far northern side of the building and there's a fair number of kids on the far south side of the building, have you taken into consideration how the kids are going to get to the cafeteria for lunch?
Yeah, one of the smaller, one of the smallest additions is actually this little guy up here that infills the space that's currently an open alcove in the outer, in the ring of existing classrooms. And that will allow us to create a continuous second circulation path from south to north to improve circulation in the school. And I think that's also one of the reasons why we chose to locate the third, fourth, and fifth graders in the addition, realizing that they have longer legs and can go a longer distance a little bit faster than the little guys.
Other questions?
Okay, I have a question. The new addition will be connected to the old building with a breezeway or... What type of connection will there be between the two?
It's enclosed space. It's entirely enclosed on levels one and two.
Okay.
Ken, I've got just a couple of things for you. One, it's nice to see you again. Number two is, I really like the videos that you all are putting out. I've watched them all, and on a couple of them, I was the very first person to put a like. I think they're well done. They are community-inclusive, and they're very easy, you know, to understand and get the feel for what's going on. So, and this is more for the benefit of the public who may not have known what the final number is in terms of new seats. What's the target? Are we on the high end at the 376? Are we in the 300 range? What are we trying to accomplish?
Honestly, we've been working with an overall figure of 680. And that number is determined by a sense from the Design Committee that the school should not be any larger than that. It's roughly the same size as Baker Butler, and I believe a little bit smaller than Kale Elementary. But there is a sense that the core facilities at this school, you know, that it would be appropriate to expand them some, which we are doing, but that any larger than a capacity of 680 would overwhelm the original school.
That makes sense, and I agree with that. Lastly, is, when you were showing us the kindergarten first and first-grade rooms, there was one room for pre-K. And I have to admit, I'm not 100% familiar with the numbers of pre-K students at Croze Elementary presently. Is there room, is room being built in for potential expansion into more pre-K rooms if needed?
Yeah, we have, we have one room that's designated pre-K right now. I think the Design Committee is having a similar debate about what is really needed for this enlarged school population. I would tell you that there are a couple of classrooms that we've identified as flex rooms, so they're not grade-specific. And as bubbles of student population come through the system, and you might have more third-grade classes one year than other grades, then that's how you occupy that flex room.
If I could, Rosalind Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer, just elaborate on that response. So currently, Brownsville Elementary has a special education pre-K program, and Croze has a head start program. We plan for the size of this addition with the assumption that sometime in the future, there would be an opportunity to have additional pre-K programs. The benefit of these K or 1 or pre-K classrooms from a facility standpoint are all designed the same. So there's opportunity from an overall number to expand pre-K in the Western feeder pattern.
Thank you very much. Other questions for Mr. Thatcher?
Hey, Ken, the only thing I would throw out is, and it's just, I know it's been an ongoing issue over there, but nobody likes to talk about it. There's a willow tree on the south side of that property on a down- There's a willow tree on the south side of that property on a downgrade.
Yes.
And you cannot see that from where the kids do play, do recess. And so there's a blind spot, and so if we could level that out, we could level that out somehow so that you remove that blind spot, and maybe, maybe it'll do, happen naturally, um, through the work, but it's just, it's one of those things that I think has always been sort of bothersome to the teachers there.
Good point.
Okay, well, Mr. Thacker, thank you so much. Uh, Ms. Snoddy, thank you. Ms. Schmidt, thank you. And, uh, uh, we look forward to, to the next time, uh, you're back with us.
Thank you very much, and thank you for saying nice things about the videos. Uh, it's not often that our, our team gets to participate in school board meetings, but they're all eagerly watching at home. And I'm really glad they were able to hear your nice comment, so thank you.
It's my pleasure. They're very well done, and I recommend them to the board.
Thanks very much.
Okay, uh, next up is, uh, with the school, public school strategy plan development, uh, Dr. McLaughlin. Hello there. Welcome.
Good evening, uh, board members. I'm Pat McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning for the School Division, and I'm here tonight to give you an update on the development of our new strategic plan. Just a quick tech check, uh, you should be seeing my slide deck now. Is that coming through to you all? Excellent. Thank you. Uh, so as, as you know, our current strategic plan, Horizon twenty-twenty, is coming to a close after seven years guiding our division. As we embark on the development of a new strategic plan, we developed an RFP process to look for a partnership to help us facilitate this work. Through that process, Batel for Kids slash Ed Leader Twenty-One emerged as the group that would be most helpful in meeting our needs. One of the things that made Batel stand out to us was their philosophy of dream don't fix and strategic planning. All too often, divisions begin their planning looking for deficiencies to repair. But a more impactful process to undertake is one in which we begin with our dreams for our division and our graduates, and then develop plans to make those dreams a reality. This process provides us an opportunity to bring the vision of our, to bring the vision of our board, our school staff, and our community at large into alignment, and then helps us to set clear targets to chart our progress and plans to reach our goals. So I'm pleased tonight to introduce you to two of our key partners from Batel, Mike Nicholson, Senior Director of Design and Delivery, and Shannon King, Chief Innovation Officer. Mike and Shannon, would you, would you just say a quick hello to everyone?
Hi, everybody. Thanks for allowing us to participate tonight. I'm Mike Nicholson, Top for Kids. And anything we do to help tonight, uh, we're here for you, so thank you.
Yes, hi, and I'm, I'm Shannon King. Super excited to be with you tonight. My son and future daughter-in-law are members of your community, so I'm really excited to get to partner with you in this work.
Excellent. So thanks again, Mike and Shannon, for, uh, for being a part of this tonight. So we've been working with Batel since the start of the calendar year to develop a process for creating our new strategic plan. And as that has developed, we've really broken it out into three distinct phases. The first is our portrait of a graduate development, and that'll consist of four iterative meetings to produce a vision of where we want to go as a school division. Once that's in place, we'll conduct a needs assessment where we compare our current state analysis that we'll do on the division uh, and compare that against our vision for the future and figure out the needs for how we're going to get there. And then finally, those two pieces of information will really inform the development of our strategic plan. Uh, that plan will be designed in collaboration with, uh, county school leadership, uh, working with Batel to draft iterations of the plan, and our design team will meet multiple times to vet and provide feedback on the unfolding of the new plan. Originally, our work would have kicked off in earnest last month, uh, but as you know, things have changed, uh, and we're adapting our timeline in hopes that we'll be able to conduct some larger group meetings in the future. Our portrait of a graduate design meetings will begin in September. Ideally, these will take place in person, but if conditions don't allow for that, we'll move the process online. Batel is currently working with other divisions in this way and are finding it to be a very successful process. This time will allow us to have a portrait of a graduate, uh, design meeting, uh, what, allow us to have a portrait to present to the board in early November. That will be followed by a division needs assessment and the development of the strategic plan to meet the dreams represented in the portrait. Staff and community involvement is key to all this work, and we hope to have a final plan ready for adoption in May twenty-twenty-one. So as you can see, this is a large undertaking that's going to take the better part of next school year to accomplish. The work in the division is led, uh, by Jamie Gelner, Helen Dunn, Jasmine Fernandez, and me, and we have weekly or bi-weekly check-ins with our partners at Batel to debrief onsite meetings, to preview meeting agendas, to recruit our design team, and to make decisions based on design team feedback. The heart of the plan design, though, really is our design team. This is a, a significant undertaking, uh, and a, and a very large team. We're hoping to have approximately a hundred members, uh, on our design team with a fifty-fifty split between internal and external stakeholders. Uh, on the internal side, we want to have representation from all departments. Uh, we envision that consisting of teachers, principals, classified employees, cabinet members, department directors, parents, and we really want twenty percent of this team to be made up of our current middle and high school students. The other half of the team is going to be external stakeholders. What we envision are inviting, uh, representatives from our Board of Supervisors, uh, from state and local government, uh, from the Chamber of Commerce, uh, community members and community organizers, faith leaders, higher education representatives, service leaders, and recent graduates to come together and help guide us through this work. This team will, uh, uh, conduct four portrait design meetings and then three strategic plan design meetings. And one of the things that really stood out to me from, uh, from our conversations with Batel was this idea that change comes from the fringe, not from those who have been served well. That if we, if we stack our design team with people who have been very successful in the school system, who have really, uh, you know, had no problems with school as they've, as they've gone through, then we're probably going to end up with a plan that looks very similar. And so we really need to be deliberate when we're creating this design team to make sure the voices of some of our underserved population are really well represented there. Um, that's a charge we've kind of given to us and given to Batel, and it's one that they've been very successful in pulling off with some other divisions. So tonight, we have a few goals. Um, uh, we're really looking forward to beginning this work this summer and next year, uh, but we could use some feedback from the board prior to beginning that. The goals we have for tonight's work session will be to review sample portraits and plans that other divisions have, uh, developed in partnership with Batel and to identify elements of those plans that we want to make certain are contained in ours. We also hope to get input from the board on the makeup of the design team and feedback about the degree to which the board would like to be involved in the creation of the plan. So to get the night started, we've included four recently developed plans. Uh, one from Windsor Central School District in Vermont. That's a small district, uh, made up of about a thousand students and five schools. You also have another small district represented, Milford School District in New Hampshire, which is a bit larger with twenty-four hundred students in four schools. Kettering School District in Ohio has about eight thousand students in twelve schools. And then finally, we've got Frederick County Public Schools in Virginia, which is, uh, probably the most closely aligned to our size, fourteen thousand students and twenty-three schools in Frederick County. So in a moment, I'm going to place you into breakout rooms to review two plans apiece. Room one will have Mr. Alcaro, Ms. Carlson, Mr. Page, and Mike Nicholson will be facilitating that room. You all are going to dive in a little bit to the Windsor Central Plan and the Kettering School District Plan. And then room two will have Dr. Acuff, Mr. Obor, Mr. Oberg, and Ms. Osborne. Um, and Shannon's going to jump in that room with you to be your facilitator, and you all be looking at the plans from Milford and Frederick. Uh, we're also asking Jasmine Fernandez and Jamie Gelner and Helen Dunn, uh, to jump into those rooms with you as well. Once in your rooms, you'll have twenty minutes to read through the plans for your group and take some personal notes. Uh, what we hope you look for are just, get, these plans, you're not going to be able to read through the whole thing in twenty minutes, but they are designed with bullet points fairly easy to skim through and see what you like about it, what you would change, and elements of the plan that you think are missing that you might like to see in ours. After that time is up, I'll bring everyone back to the main room, and each group will have ten minutes to give a summary of the plans that they reviewed. We'll ask you what pleased you, what surprised you, and what concerned you about those plans. This will be followed by some think time to consider what you feel the most important elements to be contained in our new strategic plan are. And finally, each board member will have some time to share their thinking. So if there are no questions, I'll move you into your breakout rooms at this time. Any questions about our process before we go for about the next twenty minutes into two separate breakout rooms?
How do we go into breakout rooms?
So it's magic. So this is something new that we haven't, that, that we're trying for the first time in our board meeting. Um, uh, Ms. Johnston has been working diligently to get us into breakout rooms, but she should be able to magically split you into room one and room two, uh, when, when she hits the button, uh, and you should all, uh, appear there together. So we've got our fingers crossed, uh, that this is working. It's been working for some of our leadership meetings. Um, and it's a really, uh, interesting feature on Zoom.
If, if any of us disappear into the ether, I, I'll miss you guys.
I'll miss you too, Dan. Hopefully it won't happen on your birthday, you know? All right, so, um, so Jennifer, if you're ready, if you could, um, if you could split us, and it is about seven twenty right now, so we'll target about seven forty to come back out of the breakout rooms, and, and I'll give a, a few, some heads up that we're, uh, you know, a five-minute warning and a couple-minute warning as we wrap up before we pull you back together.
Sounds good.
All right, so Jennifer, work your magic.
Just us left, Matt. Uh, Pat?
I think so. Yep, I think everyone else is in there. Now, can they, Jennifer, can they hear us as we're, we've got that blue screen up on the stream?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay.
I can go in and broadcast messages to each of them and join their rooms to tell them when it's time.
Okay, that'd be great. So yeah, maybe we can give them a five-minute warning at about, um, seven thirty-five or so, and then we'll, um, give them another one-minute warning and then pull them back in at, at seven forty.
Okay.
So we're coming back at seven forty. Is that what I heard?
So seven forty, we'll be back, so. Claire, I'd like you to stay in front of your monitor while you're, until seven forty. Look, nobody's paying attention to me anymore. All right, I'll turn it off.
Did everybody get in okay, Jen?
I think so. I'm gonna go check.
Okay.
Pat, they have like 50 seconds and then they'll be back.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jennifer. Huzzah! There we are.
Right.
Everybody's coming back in. How was your trip to the breakout room?
It was lovely. It was lovely.
Mr. Oberg, you made it back.
I think it's great to have refreshments.
When we get virtual refreshments, we'll really be, we'll really be moving.
Right. We should have had some tonight in celebration of Dave's birthday.
Yeah, I'm just saying, a good board chair would have written something.
Right.
What's too bad is that the person with the best singing voice is Dave himself, who has to sing happy birthday to himself.
Right. Well, so welcome back, everyone, and thank you, Jennifer. I really appreciate you helping facilitate getting everybody out into those groups that, you know, work sessions aren't, aren't the easiest thing to do virtually, but I think that was a neat tool to try to use. So, so we're back. And what I'd like to do now is give you all some time to share with the other board members a little bit about the plans that you reviewed. What were the things that you saw that pleased you? What were the things that you saw that surprised you, that concerned you about the plans? So Room One had planned from Windsor Central and Kettering School District. That was Mr. Alcaro and Ms. Carlson and Mr. Page. Who would like to give a quick report out from that group?
I have to unmute.
Okay, all right, okay.
Okay, things that we liked about the plans that we looked at, we liked that they had an accountability piece to them, measures that they were looking for. I think it was called measures of success. Graham mentioned that it was aligned kind of with SMART goals. They had very specific strategies to use, measurements of how you achieve them, time bound. So we appreciated that. Concerns, I shared the concern that some of these plans can get kind of overwhelming. I enjoyed the plan that had the executive summary that you can look at and kind of have an understanding. We also shared concerns about how none of the plans that we looked at had equity as a focus or goal and just making sure that we're looking at plans that have maybe are more aligned with our division in terms of diversity and have a focus on equity. And then I wrote notes, but I can't read them. So, so things that surprises, I was surprised that some of these had some really great strategies. And I remember when we were reworking our wording on the.
Priorities.
The priorities. It would have been helpful to look at some of these because it, you know, there's some great ideas that I hadn't thought of. And so that was kind of surprising to me to think I should go and look at some of these plans more often. There's a lot of great heads that have put thought into this. Would any of my other group members like to add anything?
You've done a good job.
Thanks.
All right, and then Room Two had the plans from Milford and Frederick, and that was Dr. Acuff and Mr. Oberg and Ms. Osborne. Who'd like to share out a little bit from that group?
I think I've been drafted. We, we very much, I think we very much liked the Frederick Public Schools strategic plan. It was very reader-friendly. It emphasized at the very beginning what their process was and talked about engaging the public and students and business community, parents, and, you know, even listed everybody's name. But it was very easy to understand that. It was far more detailed certainly than our last strategic plan, and I think that that's makes it more workable. I very much like the fact that right at the very beginning, they talked, and maybe this is because we're also in Virginia, so it made it easier to, to parallel some of their thought, thinking that they were going to create a learning framework. I've been thinking about Portrait of a Graduate, starting maybe in middle school, but they were looking at the framework from learning from pre-K through high school. And that is, should have been obvious to me, but it wasn't. I like the fact that they called attention to that. And similar to what Katrina said, we were very, we talked about how in the past few years, at least the last two to three budget cycles, we've been very focused on equity and launching some initiatives on that. And they're pretty silent on that. They talk about student success, but they don't specifically talk about equity. And that's been such overarching goal that we've been working with as a school division. Dave suggested that might be their very first goal, the sort of, that frames everything else we do, because it also, it does crosscut with hiring, you know, diverse staff to how we do professional development and what our curriculum looks like. Anybody else have any comments? I mean, there are lots, lots of goody bits throughout their series of goals, but. Do my colleagues, Dave or Ellen, have anything else to add?
I just wanted to add that I really, I really liked the part from Milford where they, they mentioned that they were seeking globally aware citizens.
Just one thing I liked about the mid, the Milford Community Plan strategic plan was their goal on community engagement and whether it can be folded into, you know, strategic partnerships or something. But they really had concrete elements on communicating with families, with students, with society, societal and business interests, as well as alumni, and that it was very concrete. And when we talk about communication, but I like the concreteness of their thinking on communications. Right.
Which seems important now.
Yeah.
I think one of the dangers in, in these kind of documents is that they become completely unreadable to a normal person. And I liked the fact that Frederick Berg had a glossary.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
But maybe we should design one that doesn't need a glossary.
Well, true.
That just, you know, a person of, you know, in our community can just understand.
Yep.
Yeah, that brings up, remember a couple meetings ago, or maybe last meeting, Bernard talked about that tool that they use to just scan language and see what grade level it's written on? I mean, that's been a criticism of our plans in the past is that there, they have a lot of jargon in them. So I, I'm definitely.
Pat, they have like 50 seconds and then they'll be back.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jennifer.
Huzzah, there we are.
Right. Everybody's coming back in. How was your trip to the breakout room?
It was lovely. It was lovely.
Mr. Oberg, you made it back.
I think it's great that we're refreshments.
When we get virtual refreshments, we'll really be moving.
Right. We should have had some tonight in celebration of Dave's birthday.
Yeah, I'm just saying, a good board chair would have written something.
Right.
What's too bad is that the person with the best singing voice is Dave himself, who has to sing happy birthday to himself.
Right.
Well, so welcome back, everyone, and thank you, Jennifer. I really appreciate you helping facilitate getting everybody out into those groups. That's, you know, work sessions aren't the easiest thing to do virtually, but I think that was a neat tool to try to use. So we're back. And what I'd like to do now is give you all some time to share with the other board members a little bit about the plans that you reviewed. What were the things that you saw that pleased you? What were the things that you saw that surprised you, that concerned you about the plans? So Room One had plans from Windsor Central and Kettering School District. That was Mr. Alcaro and Ms. Carlson and Mr. Page. Who would like to give a quick report out from that group?
I think that's Katrina.
I have to unmute you.
Okay, alright, okay.
Okay, things that we liked about the plans that we looked at, we liked that they had an accountability piece to them, measures that they were looking for, I think it was called measures of success. Graham mentioned that it was aligned kind of with SMART goals. They had very specific strategies to use, measurements of how you achieve them, time bound. So we appreciated that. Concerns, I shared the concern that some of these plans can get kind of overwhelming. I enjoyed the plan that had the executive summary that you can look at and kind of have an understanding. We also shared concerns about how none of the plans that we looked at had equity as a focus or goal and just making sure that we're looking at plans that have maybe are more aligned with our division in terms of diversity and have a focus on equity. And then I wrote notes, but I can't read them. So things that surprised us, I was surprised that some of these had some really great strategies. And I remember when we were reworking our wording on the...
Priorities.
The priorities. It would have been helpful to look at some of these because, you know, there's some great ideas that I hadn't thought of. And so that was kind of surprising to me to think I should go and look at some of these plans more often. There's a lot of great heads that have put thought into this. Would any of my other group members like to add anything?
You've done a good job.
Thanks.
All right, and then Room Two had the plans from Milford and Frederick, and that was Dr. Acuff and Mr. Oberg and Ms. Osborne. Who'd like to share out a little bit from that group?
I think I've been drafted. We very much, I think we very much liked the Frederick Public Schools strategic plan. It was very reader-friendly. It emphasized at the very beginning what their process was and talked about engaging the public and students and business community, parents. And, you know, even listed everybody's name. But it was very easy to understand that. It was far more detailed certainly than our last strategic plan. And I think that that makes it more workable. I very much like the fact that right at the very beginning, they talked, and maybe this is because we're also in Virginia, so it made it easier to parallel some of their thought, thinking, that they were going to create a learning framework. I've been thinking about Portrait of a Graduate, starting maybe in middle school, but they were looking at the framework from learning from pre-K through high school. And that should have been obvious to me, but it wasn't. I like the fact that they called attention to that. And similar to what Katrina said, we were very, we talked about how in the past few years, at least the last two to three budget cycles, we've been very focused on equity and launching some initiatives on that. And they're pretty silent on that. They talk about student success, but they don't specifically talk about equity. And that's been such overarching goal that we've been working with as a school division. Dave suggested that might be their very first goal, that sort of, that frames everything else we do. Because it does cross-cut with hiring, you know, diverse staff to how we do professional development and what our curriculum looks like. Anybody else have any comments? I mean, there were lots of goody-bits throughout their series of goals. But... Do my colleagues, Dave or Ellen, have anything else to add?
I just wanted to add that I really liked the part from Milford where they mentioned that they were seeking globally aware citizens.
Right.
Which seems important now.
So, so thank you. So let me, some of the things that I heard from both of the groups that we liked were inclusion of accountability measures. That some of those really were written like SMART goals and had really specific strategies there. Executive summaries are helpful for folks who just want to get a quick overview of the plan. Being reader-friendly and emphasizing the process was a plus. Having a framework that really went pre-K through 12. And I agree, sometimes we think of Portrait of a Graduate, we think we're focusing just on our senior class or our high school students. And that's important there. And in that idea of globally aware citizens. And certainly, one of the things that appeared to be lacking from a couple of those plans was a strong focus on equity like we have in our division. And that sounds like something that the board wants to make sure is included as we move forward with the new Alamo County strategic plan. So I think that kind of got to our next couple of bullets that were on there. I was going to give you a prompt around the ACPS strategic plan should contain and let you throw out a couple of things. So I've heard a good number there. Are there any other things that you, that any board members would like to add to that set and stem about what the new strategic plan should contain as we begin thinking about this process?
Just one thing I liked about the Milford community strategic plan was their goal on community engagement and whether it can be folded into, you know, strategic partnerships or something. But they really had concrete elements on communicating with families, with students, with societal and business interests as well as alumni. And that it was very concrete. And when we talk about communication, but I like the concreteness of their thinking on communications.
I think one of the dangers in these kind of documents is that they become completely unreadable to a normal person. And I liked the fact that Frederick Berg had a glossary.
Oh yeah, that's right.
But maybe we should design one that doesn't need a glossary.
Well, true.
That just, you know, a person of, you know, in our community can just understand.
Yep.
Yeah, that brings up, remember a couple meetings ago, or maybe last meeting, Bernard talked about that tool that they use to just scan language and see what grade level it's written on. I mean, that's been a criticism of our plans in the past is that they have a lot of jargon in them. So I definitely, I want to pipe up and concur with that.
Yeah, so we can look at that Lexile tool as we start developing it.
Well, you know, as Pat and I talked about a couple of days ago, you know, one of the things that I liked about ours, and this is to, I think, Dave's point, is that it was about nine pages long. And the ones that get to be monsters, yeah, people do get lost in. And I think board members can get lost in as well. You know, it's, you know, say what you're going to say, say it. And say what you said and have all of it be clear and to the point. And as Dave was saying, you know, easy to understand. You know, that's something that people who may not want to understand completely what it is we're doing or have an interest in it, but it's written in such a way that they get it. And they go, oh, well, okay, again, there's sense.
And our group commented on the pictures, the use of pictures, we liked.
Well, I think, I mean, I think our previous one, okay, it was only nine pages long, but there was no there, there, there was no concrete action items. And as a result, and I think it's a balance. It was a result, we have the end of the school year, you know, principal reports about all the innovations, all the things that they're doing at the building level to try to implement it. And that's good in terms of fostering some innovation and some ideas. But it also can create a lot of too many directions that are things going. You may want to have a little more focus for folks. I don't know what the right balance on that is, but I tended to like Frederick's bird. Frederick.
The one from Kettering had a really good section on, I think Kate mentioned this, strategic partnerships. And they talked about partnerships within the community and with parents, all of that. So I really liked the strength and the way that they described that partnership section. I think that was all in their support section of their plan, but that was really good.
Any other comments? So, so thank you, board members. I really appreciate you taking the time to dive into that a little bit tonight. We've been recording all this feedback, both in the breakout sessions and since we've come back into the large group. And we're going to use that as we start to take our next steps into the development of the plan. So there's really just two more quick items that I wanted to make sure we ran through with you. The first is the makeup of the design team. As you can see, we've kind of picked some broad categories of groups that we want to make sure are represented on the design team. And we wanted to get some feedback from you all that, you know, do we have the right groups there? Like I said, we've got the area employers and the Chamber of Commerce, the Board of Supervisors members, hopefully some state government reps and some other representatives from the local government side who aren't sitting on the board, community members and community organizers, faith leaders, higher education reps, service leaders, local government reps, parents. I think one group that I accidentally left on here were recent graduates who can tell us what their experience was like and how well-prepared they were when they went out into the real world. So one of the things I'll do soon is pull, you know, if you all have specific individuals in mind, I would welcome those names and would be happy to invite them to be a part of the design team. But for tonight, I just wanted to focus on these broader categories. Do you think that covers our, you know, our community pretty well? Are there any categories that we should be adding to this? With the idea, also that, you know, we know that that idea of change coming from the fringe is a really important one. So within all of these categories, we would look for wide representation of all of our stakeholders in the division.
Under parents, we should probably make sure that we have representatives from the different committees, especially the special ed group of parents. I think that would be a group to make sure that we have represented. And maybe with community organizations, the NAACP would be one that we should make sure that we have representatives from.
Yes, we've considered them. Hundred Black Men of Central Virginia is a group that we are hoping to reach out to in the future there, too. Thank you, Graham, or thank you, Mr. Page.
Hundred black women, too.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Carlson.
And perhaps some of the parents, you could have English language learners.
Yes, right.
That's actually a really good point, Ellen. I feel like one thing, if, you know, we were to evaluate when we talk about equity and people are getting left out, I feel like our English language learners don't get talked about a lot. So ensuring that we have representation from that community would be pretty important. I second that.
Yeah, that's been one of the areas of focus we've been talking about, too. How do we, how do we reach out to some of those communities that don't often engage with processes like this? And make sure we've got folks on the team there. So that's a goal of ours as well.
For the school-based, Patrick, are those primarily teachers or people at central office?
Yep, so if we, if we go back to the school-based slide, we've got a wide variety. So principals, teachers, classified employees, central staff, cabinet members, department directors, and a large number of students. You know, we hope to have at least 20 middle and high school students who are sitting on the panel with us, so.
And then a follow-up, how does a 100-member panel work?
So, so maybe. Mike or Shannon, do you all want to speak to that a little bit? How to, you know, how we facilitate a group that large?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, so this 100-member group is, I'm going to simplify things, but they primarily work as an information generator and a vetter. They're not a decision-making body per se, which then, I think that frees up things for this group to move. The first two meetings are really generating, if you picture a funnel, a funnel-type model, we start with the why. Why should we reconsider the outcomes for our graduates? How has the world changed? Which that phrase now really understates how the world has changed. But we spend the first meeting sharing 12 examples through four different constructs. And we ask them for their feedback about which of these trends are most relevant for this community. And so they give us feedback like that from the first meeting. In the second meeting, they give us feedback with regard to what are their individual hopes, dreams and aspirations for graduates? And then we crowdsource that. We use a crowdsourcing software with them and that. And then they start selecting their individual competencies, then their group. So they really generate, the first two meetings generate information that we synthesize, look for trends that best represent what this community is saying about their vision for the graduate. Then after they do that, they move into like a vetting role as we unpack the plan. So it's not as unwieldy as, once you consider what their functions are, it's not really unwieldy at all.
And actually, as, I thought it was a little bit daunting when I first heard the, you know, the 100 person as a target. But as we sat down and started thinking about who we might invite in different community groups and things like that, it filled up pretty quickly. It doesn't take too long to get to that critical mass there. But I think that's going to be a really key group for us to put together, that design team.
Patrick, can I say one more thing about this 100-member group? So, you know, one of the benefits of having such a large group is that especially one that's with you from the ground floor on this, is that you're really, you're really developing a strong cadre of people who become the ambassadors and supporters for this plan and key communicators as this plan unfolds and then starts to get implemented. You have an instant, strong core that you can build from and they can continue to help contribute to the talking points in the communication vehicle. So it's a good process to start with something that large.
Can I just like to add one other group in there? Is, because they're included in so many of the groups that have already been mentioned, but the Hispanic community. You know, we need some representation in there for them.
Right. Yeah, I was thinking about that group, too. But also the parents that are in that group that plans meals or like once a month they have a community dinner. And some of the group people within that group that haven't been represented too much would be those from Nigeria, from Ghana, from Turkey, and some of the Mideastern countries. I think we should make sure we have representation also from those groups in addition to.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
I have one quick additional point. You had mentioned earlier, Patrick, about how, what drew you to this agency was the conversation about how we're going to get stakeholders that haven't previously been involved. So while we have this list, what strategies are we going to be using to make it so that we don't end up with the same people? Like, how are we going to start involving, probably reaching new people? Especially if we're tossing out names that we already know. I'm assuming we know the people that have already been involved. So like, are we promoting this in some additional way?
Yeah, Mike, do you want to maybe speak a little bit to what's been successful in some of your other communities in terms of getting underrepresented groups involved?
Yeah, it's, you know, non-conventional thinking. And you do have to push on this, Katrina, to your question. You can't use old ways of identifying people because you'll probably come up with similar ones. So you got, you got to call it different ways of doing it. And let me just share a very recent. Whereas sometimes technology can form boundaries for access, sometimes it knocks down barriers to entry as well. Because for instance, the zooming we're doing now makes it easier for people to participate for those whom technology was not a boundary, but the time of the day was a hurdle or that, the conventional time periods when you did it. So it's really, and with the lead time that we have, because, Patrick, we have, and we're thinking of starting September. Patrick, is that the first date?
That's correct, yeah.
So it's, so also making use of lead time, too, to really beat the bushes and try to find unconventional ways to get, and talking to like faith-based communities sometimes can put you in access to people who are harder to, who have historically been harder to participate. There's not a magic strategy, but you just got to push the, you got to push the thinking of how to do it. Shannon, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I was just saying, there's some groups that we know that have great connections, right, your parent liaisons or your interpreters. You want to get to people who are talking to the people that you want to encourage. And so how can, you know, activating that community to help you identify and help you craft the messaging for the invitation are also really successful ways to think about that.
And really, one of the things we've been talking about a lot is personal contact. You know, this is going to need to be more than just an email or a broad announcement about, hey, do you want to, do you want to join this group? I mean, we really need to reach out to specific individuals. And what we're planning on doing is kind of having a central liaison that can be getting in touch with folks, following up with them, seeing if they've got what they need to get to the meetings, seeing if they're planning on participating, things like that. So I think the more we can personalize this for the folks we invite, the better that's going to be.
One question for you, is the state government reps, who, at what level are you all anticipating those folks?
Yeah, we were, you know, we had thrown around things like Cree Deeds and Rob Bell and, you know, folks who are up in the General Assembly. We don't know if we'll get them, you know, maybe we'll get a representative from their offices. But I think if, you know, so often when we go up to kind of make our pitches for legislative agendas and things like that, we've got to start from the ground up and talk through, here's the why behind this. Wouldn't it be wonderful if some of those, some of those representatives had been a part of building out the strategic plan that we may be, that may be driving some of our legislative agenda in the future?
Well, would that make sense, then, if you were talking to people who are on the Education Committee and who have experience with this? And whether they're our direct representatives or not, or staff people from there?
Sure, that's a great idea.
I would hate to see us appoint the state leaders who might not actually attend in lieu of a community member who's going to be engaged and really want to be part of it. So if we ask, if we ask, I'm thrilled if the state leaders want to be part of it. But I don't want them to just be a check and say, okay, yeah, I'm part of the thing and then not show up.
Sure.
And I agree with that. I mean, it could be the Department of Education people, it could be. I mean, there are so many different types of people. But I agree, they've got to be somebody who's involved.
Patrick, what's going to be, speaking about SMART goals, what's going to be a measure of success? Like, we, all of us, well, a lot of us have mentioned having people from our Hispanic community participate. Is there like a number that you're shooting for out of these 100 people?
You know, I think.
Also, are we going to have any input on this? Is there going to be a board member sitting in on this design team?
Yes, and so that's kind of my next slide, I'm sorry. That, so yes to both of those. I think, you know, an indicator of success would be, does the makeup of our design team mirror the makeup of our division, right? You know, that's one of the things we look for on our equity dashboard quite often. And that's going to be something we look for here to see that, to see that we've got quality and equity and representation there. And so that actually, Ms. Carlson brings me to my last slide. And I'm sorry, my computer's doing something a little bit funny here. So excuse me if you can't see it. I'm going to try to bring it up one more time. We did want to talk to the board about, about what level of participation you do want in this process. And we are certainly open to having you be a part of the design team in all of those meetings every single time that we come out. But we know there's also limitations to that. We would, but they're pretty easy to overcome. You know, if we get more than three board members who want to participate in this on a regular basis, then we just need to make the design team meetings, school board meetings, and open them up for the public to be there, which again, wouldn't necessarily be a negative for that. And so that was kind of the last thing I wanted to gauge from all of you tonight is to what degree you'd like to be involved in the design team meetings so that, so that I can work with Jennifer in case we do need to get some additional special board meetings on the books when we're planning to hold these.
Before we get quite to that, Patrick, I just have a common question. I mean, a lot of these community members, I mean, aside from parents, they're going to be community members, meaning they're going to also be connected to Charlottesville schools. And what, I mean, do we know what their strategic plan is? I mean, I know we operate separately and all of that, but that could be confusing for some, you know, business folk or whomever in the community. And I don't know what the appropriate nod to that is or should be, or maybe we just pretend we're totally, they're not landlocked within us, within our county.
Right. So I haven't thought through that, but we can certainly bring that to the team and have some conversation around that.
You know, I would hate to see, there's always, there's always a danger when the board members participate that we dominate the conversation. And if we, if we're really intent on saying, hey, look, we want this design team to be representative, I just think we should be cautious about that.
Well, when we went through the process with Fielding near a few years ago about the high schools, I don't believe that we had any members in that committee. I know that there were school board members who went up to see them to kind of get an update firsthand.
Yeah, I think we watched.
Right, and listen. And so I would tend to agree. I don't think that means no involvement in any way, stretch of the imagination. But I don't know that we've got to be formal members of that.
I agree. I don't want to participate as a former member. I just like to be able to, just like I sat in on a parent council. I mean, it's just interesting to listen to things directly sometimes.
Yeah, I would be interested in setting in on some of the meetings. And maybe we could have a sign-up sheet based on the dates that the meetings have been set. Then if there are maybe only two, I mean, three people, then we can decide who would be the two representatives from the board. But I think a sign-up sheet method might be a good way to go.
I think that's a great idea. And regardless of who comes to the, and how many board members come to each meeting, we'll be keeping the board up to speed as often as possible on the work that's taking place there so that you all can see what's happening and certainly give feedback along the way. So I really appreciate all of the work tonight that you've done and the time that you've put into all of this. Our next steps that we've, that we've got are going to be to start forming the design team. We're thinking that at the start of, beginning of July, we're going to be pushing out personal invitations to folks to join that. And then if all goes according to plan, we'll have the first kickoff on September 3. And then if all goes according to plan, we'll have the first kickoff on September the 3rd. And by early November, have a portrait of a graduate to bring to the board for, for your feedback and approval. So thank you all tonight. I'm really excited about this process. I'm excited that I want to thank again Shannon, Mike for being here and Jamie and Jasmine and Helen for helping to facilitate this process. But we've got, we've got a great team and I'm really excited about getting this work started. Hey, thanks for having us.
Thank you very much. And thank you to Shannon and to Mike as well. You know, we really look forward to working with you and seeing how the entire process unfolds. And I think it's going to be a, a, a great outcome from it.
Yep. Great, thank you so much.
Okay. Our last order of business tonight is other business by board members or the superintendent. Is there anybody from the superintendent's office or from the board who would have business to still do? I would throw out that there is, there was a question that was raised about having a conversation, not tonight, but a conversation, this is especially in light of the weighted grade memo just coming out recently, that last fall we discussed AP and potential limitations on that and, and in relationship to the college board. And I think that's something that, you know, not all of the members of the board were, were on the board at the time we had those conversations. And I think that would be a value, perhaps we can work it into the next agenda, just to, to, to expand on that a little bit.
I think that's a good idea, Mr. Arkauer, thank you.
Okay, and so is there any other business? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.
Happy birthday.
Feel better, Judy. Good luck with your mom, Kate.
Night, everyone.
Good night, all.
Good night, Ross. Good night, Jennifer. Hey, Phil, I just sent you an email.